Me over a little bit because I didn't want my back in front of everybody, but it seems like we can't technically do that. I'm gonna step in front of it right here. All right, I think it's on. You all hear me, right?
Testing.
All right. Well, it's that time. We're gonna get started. So, good evening and welcome, everybody, to the Isla Marada Chamber of Commerce candidates forum. I'm Joe Roth. I serve on the Isla Marada Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I will be the moderator for tonight's forum. We are all glad that you're here. We welcome those of you who are watching us from home. Also, we are recording the forum tonight. We're anticipating a very informative and educational forum, but now I need to take a moment before we get started and explain a couple of things first. I think I'll go ahead and share with you a short story, but I assure you there's an important point. For the past 10 years, I've had the honor of standing in front of many candidates during these forums. As you may expect, I have received a great deal of feedback from our community, and I can tell you that the overwhelming sentiment has been that voters appreciate the forum as opposed to a debate. They like that questions are formulated around local topics where candidates can give direct, uninterrupted answers without grandstanding, banter, name-calling, innuendo, sidebars, and other unnecessary distractions. So, tonight, I would ask you all to keep this in mind as we work our way through these questions. Give your potential constituents what they expect, a candidate who can give constructive and critical answers to timely questions without being disrespectful to your peers. Certainly, we all want to know your positions on these topics to get a better sense of which candidates we align with. But as important is the manner in which you may interact with others on either side of an issue, for it is often through spirited discussion, respect, and compromise that we build consensus and actually accomplish goals. I sincerely hope to see that tonight. And for our live audience, we owe our attention and utmost respect to those who are on the panel this evening. So, please refrain from any disruptive comments, and remember, we have a live audience out there as well, watching us, who are trying to hear what we're all saying. Now then, in the event that we veer off track with decorum, I hope my story comes to mind. In the event any of you tend to forget it, I will remind you to stick to the questions, and if any behavior comes egregious, I will be forced to silence the microphone and/or ask you to leave the venue, which I don't want to do. So, a couple more housekeeping items. Number one, cell phones. If we could refrain from using those during the forum. That means no texting, calling. I mean, obviously, if you have an emergency at home, you can excuse yourself, but other than that, we want to make sure that we have the utmost attention of everyone in the room. Let's go over the format a little bit. Candidates, you will have 30 seconds for each question unless otherwise specified. Rob Stober, over here, is our timekeeper. He will hold up a sign letting you know when you have 15 seconds left. There is also a timer for you to reference on the table over here with lights. And I also want to recognize Ken Gentis and Craig McBey, other board members, that will be assisting and providing the written questions to each of you throughout the evening. And our current president, Adriana Cuomo, back there in the corner, very proud to have her inducted just recently, will be helping to maintain our direction and efficiency this evening. In short, that means she's the one that's cutting off the microphone if somebody gets out of line. So, candidates for each council seat are seated together. Each candidate was given the first question for tonight in advance. Buddy Pender will answer first, and then we will move down the row. You will have one minute for the opening question. We will determine who answers next by drawing a name out of our bowl over here. And the opponent of the person who answers first will always go second, setting the direction for the flow down the table. We will also give each candidate a 30-second voucher. You will only have one, and it can only be used once, and you may use it for extra time on a question or follow up after everyone has answered the question. So, to open our meeting, we'd like to invite Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney to make a few remarks. But first, let's congratulate her on being unimposed in the recent election, a well-deserved recognition of her leadership and dedication to our community. As many of you know, Vice Mayor Mahoney is recovering from a knee injury. She has graciously asked to speak from her seat. With that in mind, I'll ask our President Adriana Cuomo to kindly bring her the microphone so she can open her comments. Oh, you got a microphone back there? All right, we're good. All right, go ahead, Sharon.
First of all, good evening to everybody, and a big thank you to Joe Roth for doing this, and our wonderful head of our chamber, Judy, who I've learned does a phenomenal job for this community. So, my hat off to them. I think everybody knows I'm Sharon Mahoney. I'm born and raised in the Keys. I've owned my business for 27 years, and for the past two years, I've had the honor, and it is an honor to sit on this council. I have, to be totally honest, I have learned so much. I have been educated, embarrassed sometimes, and other times proud of decisions that I have made. And just like your mother told you when you were younger, not everybody's gonna like you all the time. And so, I know there's people who don't agree with some of the things I've done, and there's other people who say they're glad I speak my mind, and that's one thing I was raised to do, is speak my mind. So, we have eight people up there. I think there's only seven. I can't see, but who want to sit on council, and I'd be very proud to sit with any of them. We are facing very difficult times down here. Big money's coming in, as we all know, and the little people like myself who own small businesses are getting sort of squeezed out. We have the opportunity, though, to make some great changes in this community. Everything from transportation, wastewater, climate change, the rise of the sea, which is sort of scary to think about, and our beautiful coral reefs that are going away. So, I would like to remind everyone sitting up there running for this position that it is a full-time job. It takes me 40, 45 hours a week. I return every phone call, and I listen to anything anybody wants to tell me. I hope each of you realize the position you're in and the great responsibility sitting on this council has. And I do look forward to two years with four of you up there, and I thank everyone for their time and their support. And I love to hear from the community, so feel free to call me with anything you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sharon, and congratulations. With that, let's dive into our questions for the evening. Each of you-
Mr. Roth?
Yes, sir.
How about the pledge of allegiance?
Oh. We can do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever, and justice for all.
I have another question for you.
Thank you, Van, for reminding me.
I thought initially we were gonna be able to talk about our background and why we're running.
You're getting there right now.
Okay, okay.
All right, so, we're gonna open up the questions for the evening. Buddy's gonna start us off because we're gonna move from that side of the room over. You've been given this question earlier. We will be addressing key issues throughout the evening. Before we move into these issues, please take a moment to introduce yourself. Share your name, any relevant background or experience you believe qualifies you for this role, why you think you're the best candidate for the village council, and lastly, what are your key priorities for the next two years if elected? What specific goals do you hope to accomplish for the benefit of the community? Buddy.
Hi, I'm Buddy Pender. I'm a sixth-generation resident of Isla Marada, and I think I was, I've owned an underground utility business. I worked for Florida Keys Aqueduct. I sold my company, and I got elected in 2020. Then I got re-elected in '22. I ran a multimillion-dollar business, putting in wastewater pipe and grinder pumps for the Florida Keys Aqueduct. And I know a lot of people here. I've grown up here. I know the land. I know our environment. So, I feel I am the person for the job. I've had, got a lot of experience working with different agencies just recently, in the last four, almost the last four years. The Florida Wildlife Corridor, a lot of the conservation land stuff, the mitigation bank stuff. So, Isla Marada, I feel is, I feel I'm the best person for the job. And let me read you a couple of things of why I feel that, okay. My short-term goals includes making sure we stay on track with our comprehensive plan update and workforce housing, long-term work with staff, and formulate a strategic plan to purchase environmentally sensitive lands. Second, form a strategic partnership with our county and state partners in order to address nearshore water qualities issues. And if I'm picked with this, with, I pick these issues because it's what the community is supportive of, all right? And they will take longer than just the next term on village council to do these next two. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Buddy. Van?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Van Cadenhead. I've lived here since 1956, and went to Coral Shores, and I know a lot of people in the community, and I've been a frequent flyer here at the meetings. And I really think that this could be a pivotal election for Isla Marada because since we've incorporated, we've turned into an exclusive elitist enclave, but I called that shot when we first incorporated. And it's, a lot of the building and development questions have been answered on behalf of the building and developers. So, I'm hoping that the residents can get foothold back and start driving the bus again, as we should have been all along. We have probably 25 or 30% of Isla Marada left to save that's not built out to the property lines. And if you elect me, I promise that I will run with whoever is up here to stop. I would, I would say it's a pleasure to be here, but it's a pleasure to see you, so thank you.
Thank you, Van. Anna?
Can you hear me?
Hear you.
Anna Richards, I grew up here. I've graduated from Coral Shores. I have four children who were all born and raised here. They're all adults now, starting their own businesses and hoping to preserve the area that they know as home, that we all know as home. And I think our biggest thing is preserving the environment, conservation, and reaching goals with sustainability and achievability, and being realistic about that. Like, we have certain things that really need to be addressed, and I think that we need to work hard to get to those goals.
Okay, thank you, Anna. We're to the point to Captain Steve Friedman. Steve Friedman couldn't be with us this evening. He had a prior commitment somewhere else. So, but he has given me the statement, and I'd like to go ahead and read his words for you all this evening. It says, "My sincerest apologies for not being with you this evening. Long before we knew, we'd be urged to seek a seat on the village council or be invited to tonight's forum. We booked a four-day fishing tournament in the Lower Keys." Obviously, Steve's a captain, so that's his livelihood. "I trust the small-business owners amongst the chamber's membership will appreciate and understand our commitment to our customers. As a fishing guide, our business works every day with other small-business owners, gas stations, bait shops, grocers, marinas, hotels, and restaurants that all depend on the health of our local waters. We believe our water is Isla Marada's economy, and we will make protecting it the priority. With my two decades of running small businesses in the Keys, coupled with a BA from Drake University in Spanish and a master's from the University of New Mexico in Latin American Studies, with an emphasis in political science and community and regional planning, I am ready to serve on our Isla Marada Village Council. My wife Christine and I just sent our son off to school, and our daughter attends Coral Shores High School. We call Isla Marada home because we love the water. We must protect it to maintain our quality of life. Thank you, Captain Steve Friedman." Deb Gillis, you're next.
Thank you. So, I'm Deb Gillis, and I've been calling Isla Marada home for the last 30 years, and I have sat on council for nine years in the past. As a resident and local small-business owner of two motels, I believe that I know what it takes to survive here and what we need to do. I also served on the local planning agency, the Chamber of Commerce Board, and several affordable housing committees. I care very deeply about Isla Marada and am very committed to making a positive difference in this town. My top priority would be addressing our affordable housing issues. We have a problem going on there. Streamlining the government processes to reduce expenses and to complete our comprehensive plan review with also a review of the LDRs, the Land Development Regulations. I believe these are essential to preserving our community and our small-town way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Mary Barley?
Thank you. I'm Mary Barley. I've been coming here for 50 years, and I've lived here almost 30 now. I'm very, I've always been committed to Florida ever since I've been here. First, I'm American, then I'm a Floridian, and then I'm a conk. And I love being a conk because I love this place with my whole heart and soul. And all I've done working on the Everglades proves, I think, my commitment to this community because that's how we got started, when Florida Bay turned into pea soup, and we said, "We need to do something." And I'm more committed because my husband died in an airplane crash trying to save this place, and I'm gonna make sure that what he died for, we're gonna all help him find. Now, environmental issues, we've got economic issues, economic-environmental issues. You can't just put the economy outside of the environment because that is well worth and part of how we do our business here. So, we have a marine environment, and we have a terrestrial environment. We have to think about all three of these. It's been a constant delay for decades. Delay is not a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Don Horton?
Thank you, Joe, and good afternoon. I'm Don Horton, and I've been a full-time village resident for 47 years. My experience as a 32-year business owner, as well as working for the village, has provided me with a unique skill set. I've worked on both sides of this counter. I've served and chaired numerous committees for the village that included the LPA twice, Affordable Housing Committee, Manager Selection, and a Special Ad Hoc Committee. I was the head of the Building Department and Code Enforcement for the village, and I've attended tons of council meetings since incorporation. Some may say I'm overqualified. My priorities are budget, the traffic, workforce housing, the fills, and citizen participation. I don't believe that a small town needs big government. If it saves on taxes while not lessening a service, then I think that's a good idea. My goals would be to adopt the new comp plan, find innovative ways to lessen our traffic burden, develop workforce housing initiatives, and help businesses flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Tom?
My name's Tom Raffanello. I'm the junior person here. I've only been here 15 years. I'm a husband, a father of two school-aged children, one's in PKS and the other one's in Coral Shores. Prior to that, I was a DEA special agent for 35 years, served all over the world. The last 20 years, I was an executive manager. I ran operations in the state of Arizona, the state of Florida, and for a time period, I was the chief of worldwide operations. That's 110 domestic offices, 70 foreign offices, a budget of a quarter of a billion dollars, and responsibility for everything, and everything includes building services, attorneys, personnel, accounting, and anything else that goes across your desk. Some may say I am overqualified, but I want to do this job because I'm a public servant, and this is what I want to do. So, I'm not gonna list the problems. We know what the problems are, but this is what we should use as our guiding force for it. Thanks a lot, Joe.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so, we're gonna move on to question two. All right, I'm gonna draw a name.
Rip the Band-Aid off.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read the question for us all. "Local businesses are struggling to find employees, creating a vicious cycle involving workforce availability, workforce housing, and transportation. How do you propose addressing these interconnected challenges to ensure the sustainability of our business community? What steps would you take to prevent further strain on local businesses due to these workforce issues?"
I think that is the, one of the most important things that we have to deal with right now. I mean, I know my children are facing the same issues. They can hardly afford to live here. So, we need to chase grants, whatever we need to do, work towards working together with everybody and the community to try to figure out where a good place is for affordable housing and where we can put these people.
Okay, thank you, Anna. We're gonna move down the line to Deb Gillis next.
Affordable housing is probably the most critical issue that we have going on, and there are ways of building it. We need to find the land, which the village owns about three lots that I know of that are big enough to do, I don't know, 10 to 20 units on. And these, these can be built with federal money so that it doesn't raise our taxes. We need to work very hard at finding out how to do this.
Thank you, Deb. Mary Barley?
I think one thing we haven't talked about, and again, I'm gonna say delay is not a solution, and they've been delaying these things for years now, but tourist tax, some of that tax should come back. What is a tourist? That's a working force. I don't care what you're doing. If you're a fireman, whatever, we're serving not only residents but tourists. Part of that tax should be used and come back to the village and help us make workforce housing, not affordable housing, workforce housing, which is different because if you get federal and state money, they have all kinds of criteria, and we can't meet them because our cost of living here is too high.
Thank you, Mary. Don Horton?
Thank you, Joe. As I said in my opening statement, I think that we need to develop workforce housing initiatives. Some of the things that we've run across is the cost even of permits and building affordable housing units. And so, I think that we need to look into funding and getting funding, having opportunities to have public and private partnerships, and open up these permits where they're available to us instead of squirreling them away like the last council's done.
Thank you, Don. Tom?
I've recently been informed that from the TDC, Monroe County got $35 million. Don't know how it's been split up for workforce housing, number one. Number two, if we would take project, here's something that I said before. If we don't like the way TDC is doing business, go to the legislature. If we don't like the way workforce housing is being handled and the rules are too prohibitive, that's what you have a legislation for, and that's why you have people in Washington. Tell them what you need. They're there to help us. We don't do that.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Buddy?
I would say that we need to work with other inter-local governments, starting, i.e., with Tallahassee. Danny Perez is our incoming speaker- Danny Perez is our incoming Speaker of the House. You know, let's go talk to some of these people. I've been in meetings where they are very successful in certain cities doing this. We just got to take the bull by the horn and get it done. The money is there. You got to go ask for the money. If you don't ask for it, you can't receive it. So I'd say, you know, you just got to go after it. You got to get proactive.
Okay, Buddy. Van.
We need some major changes in our planning department. We are allowing, at the present time, moderately-priced hotel rooms of 400, 500 square feet to be sold off as TDRs to developers for 10,000-square-foot mansions on the ocean. This is not how we're going to solve this problem. We're going to solve this problem by assuring that 400 and 500-square-foot motel rooms are used for affordable workforce housing. Thank you.
Okay, that gets us through question two. So we're going to move on to question three. I'm going to draw a name again, and this time, we're going to start with Deb Gillis.
You're just going down the line?
Yeah, I guess. It looks that way. So I'll read it for you. "The Florida Department of Transportation's freight improvement plan includes discussions about not renewing right-of-way leases, which could result in local businesses losing critical parking spaces along the highway. Do you see this as an unfair burden on business owners? And what steps would you recommend to prevent this process from moving forward?"
This, because of the fact that it's been allowed for several years, it is kind of an unfair practice to take these away. And as for what we can do, is as a government, local government, we need to find lots and ways of helping them find new parking if that proceeds, but I think we need to approach DOT about not going that far.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Mary Barley.
Well, I haven't seen the improvement plan, so I'm not... Excuse me, I'm sorry. I haven't seen the improvement plan, so I'm not sure exactly what that means for our local businesses. Are they still going to be able to pay for them, which I understand they rent right now? Is that part of the program? If it's not, we need to go up there and find out if it can still be part of the program. We need to be part of the improvement plan, and we need to be at every meeting that they have so that we make sure Isla Marada gets a fair shake as they move through the Keys with their new plan.
Thank you, Mary. Don Horton.
Thanks, Joe. I got to say that even though I'm not sitting on council, I was one of the first people that businesses contacted when they were notified that the DOT was going to start shutting down their right-of-way and taking away their right-of-way leases down in the southern part of Upper Matacombe. And I got to tell you that I instantly started making phone calls to connections that I have at DOT and connections that I have at the state level, and just hopefully, we're going to be able to look into this and work this out, just like the business owners did in Key Largo when their right-of-ways were about to be taken away. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Tom.
Sometimes, believe it or not, the government proposes stupid things that don't work. This is why you have legislators. If we don't like what they're doing, let's go there and tell them, "This will not work here for us. Give us another plan." We don't have to roll over for everybody that wants to do something in a place where we live. That's what got us to this point. We need to stop it and let them know we're not going to be pushing around.
Thank you, Tom. Buddy.
I would say that we do need to go to Tallahassee and meet with the secretary, and we need to let them know that in Isla Marada, we need to have the input of what's going on here. So I would say, again, just like I said, you know, about the affordable housing is we got to be proactive. You do have to go and spend time. People wonder, "What, you go to Tallahassee?" It's, you need to go, and not only talk to our legislators, but go talk, there's the whole House there. Go into other people that, the Speaker. Thank you.
Thanks, Buddy. Van.
The FDOT wants to break the Isla Marada choke point. This plan that they have is to put five lanes of traffic down through the middle of Isla Marada to eliminate all the parking that is historical for the businesses that line Isla Marada. This is not permissible. This should not be stood for by the citizens or the businesses of Isla Marada. It would destroy our tourist economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Anna.
I think that we do live in a special area, and we have certain circumstances that are different than a lot of other big cities. And I also think that we should go to Tallahassee, and we should fight for it, but we should also work on FDOT and getting a representative down here that actually lives here and understands the differences that we have in this community.
Okay, thank you so much, Anna. We're going to move on to the next question four, but before we do so, you know, I want to get the information in tonight. We got a lot of good questions. You guys got a lot of good responses, and 30 seconds seems to be ticking by real fast. And while I'm not a CPA, I did a little math in my head, and I think maybe we could go to a minute on these next few questions and give you guys a little more time to elaborate and illustrate your points a little bit better. I feel like we're rushing you somewhat, so let's, question four, if that's all right with everybody, we go to, we'll start with a minute response? Okay, very good. Question four. "The village has recently made several land acquisitions. What is your stance on the village continuing these types of purchases? How do you believe the village should manage the parcels that it has purchased? And what do you think is an appropriate use for the future land acquisitions? In your response, please share your thoughts on balancing government control of growth through land acquisition versus the protection of private property rights." We will start with Don Horton.
Thank you, Joe. I've questioned a couple of the purchases that we've made in the past, although that we can make good out of them. I believe that the Island Silver and Spice, what I think should turn into that is a municipal parking lot. I think that most cities, small or large, have a municipal parking lot, and it's a perfect place for us to have that in the business center of downtown Isla Marada. I'm not saying that it should be a free parking lot. I think that it should be paid parking, and certainly, the citizens should get a major discount when they use that. But I think that we need to focus on purchasing lands that are, that were for preservation and let free business and free enterprise buy the commercial lands that we have that are already developed. And we need to focus on the environment and saving our lands that are environmentally sensitive, and I think those dollars are where those should go.
Okay, thank you, Don. Tom.
Well, I'm not for buying land and speculating. Both pieces of land are in commercial areas. We should get rid of them. We should sell them, hopefully, at a profit. If we're going to buy land, maybe we can buy land for affordable housing. I don't like for the village to get into the land purchasing business. I think there are better things to do with the money. If you've got that much money, give some back to the taxpayers. But we don't have a village here to acquire land and do things like that. I'm all for preserving what we have, but that should come through a solid comp plan with the input of the citizens to keep things the way we want them. Am I good?
You're good. Our paper's not, but you're good.
Do I have more time?
Yes.
Okay, good. There are much better ways to spend the money. I think we're even overpaying for some of these places. They're in commercial areas. Sell them to commercial businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Buddy Pender.
I would say that the property that we've already purchased, I'd say that we should look at the majority of it for workforce housing. And as Don was saying about the parking, like Island Silver and Spice, there could be parking there, too, but we already own this property. There are vendors out there that will build, come you give them the property, they build them, they manage them, they operate them, and we get paid for that. So I would say, and then also, I would also say that we need to continue buying preservation land. We need to protect our green space, just like the Glenn property that the village purchased, those 90 acres, all right? So I think we should continue that, but I think personally, we need to look at the properties that we own for workforce housing.
Thank you, Buddy. Van.
Well, I completely agree with what Mr. Pender just said. I think we should continue to get as many large tracts of pristine habitat that we can preserve and buy that and put that under our control. And as far as the Island Silver and Spice property, that could safely and has been shown to be able to handle 16 to 18 affordable housing units. Now, we could have a hybrid project of 18 units there or 16 units there and a municipal parking lot and a recharge station for electric vehicles. That's under the control of the Village of Islands now, and for us to make the most use of it, I think a hybrid operation might serve us the best, because it's a prime piece of property right in the center of town, and we need parking and we also need affordable housing. So I think we could do both on that property, and I would put this with the new planning, comprehensive planning firm that we have and see what they do with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Anna.
I think if we're going to spend the money, which is all of our tax dollars that we've all worked really hard for, that we should spend it wisely and purchase up all the sensitive land that we have out there that we don't want built on. We have a lot of wetland properties that are out there. I see it every day. I deal with it. So why, I don't think we should be spending our money on very expensive commercial land when we could be buying a property that we could preserve and keep forever.
Okay, thank you, Anna. That's, we're through that question, so we're going to move on to...
Not quite.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deb. Oh, yeah.
Mary and I would like to answer that.
Having one missing seed up there is throwing me off. So Deb, let's...
We'll just slide it out of the way.
Let's move on to you. Thank you.
So we do have at least three pieces of land, the Island Silver and Spice, the church, and the Machado property, that all three would be eligible for affordable housing. And the one in particular, I checked, and it's about 17 units you could build on Island Silver and Spice. Once again, there's companies that would help us with that. I do think it should be some kind of mixed use if we can figure out the parking, and paid parking needs to be what it is. Our businesses, we just talked about the DOT plan of them taking parking spaces, so they need someplace to put their employees so that they can leave their regular spaces for their guests, their customers. I do think that we ought to, was that it?
It's a...
Oh, I saw the stop. Sorry. I do think we ought to buy environmentally sensitive land, but we need to spend the money wisely in what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Mary Barley.
I think it's amazing that here we are talking about buying land with biodiversity. After all these years, we've talked about it for how long have we been a village? It's time to actually do something and find out. We should have a list. I think I went to a meeting and I heard Ron telling us that he needed a million dollars to go and buy the land that was on their list to start. They wouldn't even give him a million dollars to start buying the land. If we can't make those kind of decisions, we are never going to get to where we want to be. And again, delay is not a solution, and that is what keeps happening in this village. We keep delaying all the important decisions we need to make for workforce housing. Workforce housing, we need to concentrate on workforce. There's a big difference between affordable housing and workforce housing. I lived in an apartment for many years, and that's what most people do. And I think the Silver and Spice is the perfect place to start that. You can have municipal parking underneath, and you can build some units up above that. There are lots of wayses, yeah, right, and things that we can certainly think about and do and think outside of the box. We keep ourselves in this box, and until we get out of it, we're going to continue as we are.
Okay, thank you, Mary. So that brings us to question five, this time for real. And we're going to make you work double time, Mary, because you're going to be first for question five. And I'll go ahead and read that to you all. "Spot zoning can sometimes be an effective tool in land use planning. Under what circumstances do you believe it should be used, and why? Please explain your rationale for when it is appropriate and how it should be handled to benefit the community as a whole."
Well, I'll say one thing. Until you see what they want to spot zone it for, you can't, you don't know if it's going to be appropriate. So just saying appropriate is not, I don't think, I don't think it's wise to go out and just say that. I would probably, most of the time, be against spot zoning. That's why we have land use. That's why we're doing a new comprehensive plan, which should have been done again. We delayed that and delayed that, and it's going to be delayed again because it's going to take a couple of years probably to finish it. So what are we going to do in the meantime? Spot zoning is not smart zoning. Spot zoning usually means somebody's going to suffer on the other side of the zoning, because I want to give my friend something special, but I don't care about you next door. So if it's like that, we certainly don't want to do it. If it's not, we'll go ahead and we'll look at it. Certainly, you'll look at it and give it a fair shot, but I'm certainly not going to sit here and say that I agree with spot zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Horton.
Thank you, Joe. I don't believe in spot zoning. I think it's dangerous. I think that if anybody here has ever had to go through a zoning change, which I've probably done the most in the village, only because I knew where all the mistakes were made through the years, they made, every one of them made sense, and the majority of them got majority votes by the LPA and by the council. The zonings need to be congruent with each other. There were a lot of bad zonings that were put in our original comp plan, and if I'm on council, I hope to be helpful to make sure that we don't create more nonconformities than we do the proper zoning for this town. There needs to be a lot of citizen input. We need people to come to these meetings as we're going through these discussions, and we need to make this right this time, because the last time it was wrong. But I got to tell you, I just wouldn't be on board with any spot zoning. Zoning has to make sense so it doesn't harm the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Tom Raffinello.
It's tough to comment on something when you don't know the specifications of what they're talking about. We keep, and I agree with Mary on this wholeheartedly, we have moved things now. In the 15 years I'm here, we're still dealing with some of the same problems. People that say they're going to solve the problems were part of the reason we have the problems. I think that we just need to be definitive, look at the problem, and solve it, not a day, a week, or a month, or 10 years down the road, but I'm not for spot zoning off the top. I would never take a tool out of the toolbox, but there are so many variables in this thing that I just couldn't give a blanket answer as to yes. I never say never, but I want to know what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Buddy Pender.
I'm also, I agree with Don. I am not for spot zoning, and I'm also, when the village came into existence, they changed a lot of zoning on certain properties. There's just been one that's came up recently, and it's not right that certain people that lived, keep it conformity. If it's residential, keep it, or if it's commercial, but it's just, I don't believe in spot zoning, and I think it should be. The properties that were rechanged illegally, not, some people didn't even get notified, all right? Many people didn't get notified when that happened. I think those properties should be put back to what they are, what they, how they were zoned in the beginning, but no, no spot zoning. I don't believe in spot zoning either.
Okay, Buddy. Van.
Well, I have to fall in with the majority here. Spot zoning is something that you can't really comment on unless you know the specifics of the situation. And for the most part, I'm against it, but as Mr. Raffinello and Ms. Barley said, you have to examine and give a fair shot to whoever wants to do it. And if it's for the benefit of the town, if it's for the benefit of common sense, if it makes common sense and we can find a way to do it legally, then we can entertain looking at it. But for the most part, this falls under why we should have had a comprehensive plan redo a long time before now, because this has been a problem for a long time, and a lot of people have benefited from it. So I would, I would say that we need to have this be addressed by the next comprehensive plan company that we have a contract with coming up soon, hopefully on October 10th. We'll turn this over to them to peruse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Anna.
I feel like we're all on the same page on this one, that we need the uniformity along the lines. If it's residential... If it's residential, it's residential. If it's commercial, it's commercial. Everybody knows, I mean, since I was a little kid here, if it was on the highway, it was commercial property. Very rare did you have an actual residence on the highway. And the spot zoning, we're going to start picking and choosing. I think that's a little unfair to some people, and I just don't agree with it.
Okay. Thank you. Deb Gillis?
Well, I also agree that the spot zoning should not be allowed, but to do subzoning inside a zone to limit it may be an option. If you have something that was in a category that shouldn't have been, but you don't want to open it up completely, then you write a subzone to allow, to limit what they can do with some of the things that the original zoning would have allowed. So, no. To act, to do true spot zoning should not be allowed, but to do some kind of subzoning inside of a zoning to limit how people can use the property and not make it all open-ended is where I would go.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. I think that brings us to... Is everybody comfortable with the one minute? We're okay with it? We want to continue?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So this brings us to the question number six, which was given in advance to you all to take a look at and get a little more, give a little more color on that way. And I'll go ahead and read it. "The environmental challenges are critical to the future of Isla Marada. In your opinion, what are the two most pressing environmental issues facing our community?" And, yeah, I'm going to draw. Then we'll start with Tom.
Well, my first is wastewater. And everyone in here knows we have a tremendous problem with the way we administer the wastewater here. We're running into big problems with Key Largo. We're not doing a good job. We're spending phenomenal amounts of money to put Band-Aids on it. I happened to be at a forum where I spoke to one of the fellows on the Key Largo wastewater board. We should be negotiating with them to solve this problem, not to study it, not to kick it around, not to design the bushes around it, but to solve the problem in a finite amount of time. These are the types of things that aggressive councils should do. That's my first one. My second one is the out-of-control overdevelopment we've had. We're actually, I've got 15 seconds left? We're actually considering building a five-star resort on T-Table Key, which would destroy everything around there. We have people that are advocates. Unfortunately, we have people that are advocates for developers who don't care. They'll make their money and they'll leave. Those are the two most important things that are hurting our environment.
Okay. So I think you're pretty clear on wastewater, what you thought would be to solve the issue.
Sure.
With the development issue, with that being said, what do you think would be, you know, more of a concrete action to deal with that?
Absolutely. A real comprehensive plan. We've had people driving bulldozers through the masquerade we've had here as a comprehensive plan for the last decade or so. A comprehensive plan devised by the residents on how they want this generation to live and the next generation to live. Those types of things. Make it restricted. Limited growth is the name of the game here, not untethered growth.
Okay, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Don Horton, same thing here. We're going to, we've read the question here. You have provided a couple of answers, nearshore waters, and it looks like taxes. You want to talk about those two things for a minute here?
So on the environmental challenge, I think the two most pressing environmental issues are protecting our nearshore waters and addressing resiliency for our businesses, our homes, our infrastructure, and to work through climate change. You know, we hold the responsibility to protect our nearshore waters, our fishing industry, our mangroves, and our shorelines. So the challenge is the past laws that will continue to protect and improve our waters and address sea level rise in our environment. I'll continue to advocate for stronger stormwater management plans, logical use of stormwater projects, hardening of our already improved shorelines and canals, and to protect the properties from degradation, erosion, and sea level rise. Those are very important. As far as the wastewater issue, if I've got a little bit more time, you know, the Key Largo wastewater treatment district is only using about two-thirds of its capacity. So we can still have slow growth and wise growth, and when they calculated how to build that thing, they calculated to actually have buildup, which we hope, total build-out, which we hope we never have. But the capacity is there. I think the village needs to work with them. We need to get on board with them instead of fighting with them, and we need to actually have them take over our wastewater system. They're the professionals at that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. So that pretty much covers your number one there. Your number two, you alluded to the tax burden and allocations. You want to just...
I can ask the question for later.
Oh, is that the question for later?
I can ask the question for later.
No, I'm sorry. I'm skipping ahead.
You did too, didn't you?
That's what I was just going to ask you, Joe. Are you only doing question one?
No, we're doing six right now.
Just firing them, Joe.
It's all right. We'll keep going. We'll get through it. It's all good stuff. Everybody's getting...
You make the rules. Go ahead.
Getting good information out there. All right. So let's move on to Mary Barley.
Okay. Well, I certainly agree with the wastewater system, that is significantly a huge environmental problem, not only for, we're getting caught in traffic jams, but how that impacts people because that is a very dangerous, dangerous situation. I understand in 2019, we had a study done because we were having problems way back then. They didn't implement it. So there we go, delay again, and delay again is not a solution. Look at that plan. I agree with Don. I think we need to go and get Key Largo to take it over. They're the experts. They know what to do. We've been spending $2 million fixing, but not really making it well again. So we have to quit doing that and start making things that make sense, that stop costing us way too much money. And then the other thing is, you know, we are near capacity. What are we going to do? How much more can our infrastructure support? We already see the wastewater can't support it, what we're doing. So how are we going to grow in a smart way if we can't even fix the wastewater?
I think that pretty much covers most of what you answered on here. Appreciate that. Deb Gillis?
Do I just, I didn't know whether you were going to start or...
So on the environmental issues, you listed waters including coral and mangroves and capacity of our habitats, ocean, and land.
Okay. So the waters, including the corals and mangroves, is as we, they're critical for what we need and what we want to do. So we need to put in stronger protections in restoring our corals and our mangroves while also addressing the stormwater issue. It's going to be a huge issue. I sat on the board when we fought very hard to get money for wastewater, and if we think wastewater was expensive, stormwater is going to be more expensive. So I've got some experience there. As for the capacity, we, we are getting to a environmental capacity. Some of our wastewater, our water, our electric is not at capacity. They have room for growth, but we need to watch our environmental capacity, and we do that through prioritizing and making rules of, on redevelopment of protecting those environmental issues on those properties or offshore as it comes through.
Thank you, Deb Gillis. And number five there, the next seat would be Steve Friedman, and this was provided to him earlier, and he has given us a written response, and I would, I would like to go ahead and read that for you. "Our village council, with regards to question six, obviously, the two most pressing environmental issues facing our community. Our village council, working closely with Monroe County, has been leading the way on getting ahead of the curve on sea level rise. Climate change is our new reality. The recent hiring of a sustainability and resiliency coordinator and the completion of a comprehensive vulnerability assessment that examines sea level rise, rainfall, and tidal flooding are a great start toward planning for our future. Next year, we will also see the completion of our roads elevation study outlining ways to mitigate and protect our roads from rain and tidal flooding as well as sea level rise. It is critical that we get ahead of sea level rise to protect our families and our quality of life. Secondly, our village must be efficient and fiscally responsible while providing quality public services that also protect our local waters from pollution and overdevelopment. Our economy depends on healthy, pristine water, and we learned the hard way a decade ago when 40,000 acres of seagrass died off in Florida Bay just how impactful our government actions or inactions can be on our local economy." For question one, you had responded canal restoration and sea level rise. Want to talk about those two for just a minute here?
I think that we're actually doing a lot of work already on canal restoration, and I think it's important that we continue that work and also working on putting in culverts. I know I worked with Peter on getting one put in Lower Matacombe to help with the basin down there, getting it clean and getting fresh water flowing through all of these things. Also, sea level rise is protecting our shorelines and our nearshore waters and protecting our mangroves and building resiliency so that we don't get to position where we're at. We need to work with, I work every day with FEMA. Being a certified floodplain manager, I'm fully aware of all the issues that FEMA is dealing with, and whenever these new flood maps, if FEMA decides to pull them out eventually, could make a difference. I know after Hurricane Irma, we went along as we were going to do surveys at people's houses. We were checking the elevation of watermarks on the houses versus the flood zone and seeing how they compared to see if FEMA was actually right or not.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Van? Let me get your... All right. So to, the two pressing environmental issues, your responses were unchecked overdevelopment, commercial and residential, and illegal vacation rentals. You want to talk a little bit more in detail about those two?
Yes. This is, this is putting 20 feet of cotton in a 10-foot sack, and we've been doing it for years, and that's why we have such a bad wastewater problem. That's why we have such a bad traffic problem. That's why we have no affordable housing. 75% of the houses in Isla Marada are not homesteaded. They're either second homes, or they're vacation rentals, illegal or not, and they're investment properties. This is why we've got this problem, and we've got to quit in the planning department okaying permit after permit for the continued expansion onto the properties that are in Isla Marada. We've been overbuilt here, the population, for years. There's been too many people here. There's been in the Chamber of Commerce and the TDC and the Rotary, they all want more and more people to come here for the bottom line. But the bottom line does not bode well for the residents of Isla Marada. Crushing this amount of people into this small of a space creates a bottleneck. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, Van. Thank you very much. Buddy, your two areas that you were, you referenced here are nearshore water quality and sea level rise. You care to talk about those a little bit here?
I think nearshore water quality is definitely a big problem here. I worked with Bob Glazer many years ago with the Conk Project, and they weren't reproducing in the nearshore. They were taken offshore. Within six months, they were reproducing again, I think, including protecting our reefs and our coral systems, I think, as well as the nearshore waters. We got to start thinking about stormwater. I was at a meeting, God, almost 20 years ago, and Michael Soule was the Secretary of DEP, and he said, "If you think you're seeing something now with wastewater, wait until you see what stormwater's going to cause because it's," you know, and my second thing was the sea level rise. We all know it's coming. We got to prepare for it. That's the reason they're, they're looking at raising the roads for us to even be able to live here. There's certain communities that, I mean, you look at the tidal, look at Cedar Keys, you know, just what happened to them with, it's very low. We got to start thinking about this with new construction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Buddy. We're going to move on to question seven. Draw another name. And Buddy, we're going to start with you. So question seven. "The 2,000 census showed that Isla Marada had a population of approximately 6,800 people, with the village employing 53 people and operating on a budget of approximately 8.3 million. Today, the most recent estimates place the population at approximately 7,100 people, and the village now has 139 employees, and the current expenditures are about 61 million. Can you tell us how we got here, whether we're in the right place, and if not, what changes would you propose?"
Oi, moli.
I would be happy to.
You know what? It makes me hear what Ron Levy said when they first brought the village into existence, what our, what our budget was going to be. I don't, I won't even repeat the number because it's, you know, tens of millions more of where it is today. And how we got there, I don't know. I've been on council now four year, November will be four years. And alls I can say is, I know from running a private business and successful, having just 35, 40 employees, I had to be very frugal. So I, and what I see, how long it takes to get things done, I, you know, it's, I can't believe it, that in government, how much it costs and how long it takes to get things done. And a lot of this stuff could be subbed out. We could do, a lot of cities do that, where they sub out their landscaping, they sub out, then, then, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Buddy. We're going to move to Van.
When Isla Marada Incorporated, the four islands, the Advalorm, was $1.1 billion. Last year, this year, it's $6.5 billion with a B. Now, we didn't gain a square foot of property. We have just enhanced those four islands to that point. Doing that has made it all but impossible for middle-class people and lower-middle-class people to exist here because everything's gone up, the food's gone up, the insurance has gone up, the water's gone up, everything's gone up, and I might want to use my 30-second voucher here. You know, okay, all right, okay. All right. This is, this is a problem for everyone who does not have deep pockets. The people with deep pockets don't really care. They'll just write a bigger check next year. But Isla Marada is finally recognized this year and cut back a little bit on the mileage rate. But, but as property values continue to increase in vast numbers, it becomes more and more difficult for common people to live here and for people in America to come here, sorry.
Okay, Van. Thank you. Anna?
Well, how we got here, I have no idea because honestly, in 2000, I was pretty busy raising a bunch of, a bunch of little children running around and volunteering in the schools and everything else. But clearly, the price of living and everything, cost of everything, has gone up. So I would say for starters, we need to do a very clear look over the budget and what we are actually spending the huge amounts of money on and see what we can do to change some of those options.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Deb Gillis?
So I don't know how we got here for sure either. That's a very tough question. I do think, though, that the 53 people that we had in 2000 compared to the 139, that 139 does include 44 fire people. I'm not sure that the original 53 included fire, but I don't know that. And the cost of living... And the cost of living, everything has gone up. I believe that we are providing a lot more services to our citizens than we ever were in the original days, but that's part of the reason why we incorporated. We didn't like what was going on, and we wanted, we thought we could do better. So, we incorporated, and as you incorporated, you do have to watch the pennies. I run a business, you have to watch the pennies, otherwise, they just slip away. I used to have a boss that says, "Drops of water, fill a bucket," and that's true. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Mary Barley?
I agree. I think, you know, in the beginning, we had a volunteer fire department. I don't know how many of you lived here then. And fire departments do cost a lot of money, and we now have a sheriff or police department. I think we can look and see how we got there. And then, we used to have landscaping was contracted, and maybe that's what we need to do. Benefits cost a lot of money when you have full-time employees. And all of us who have businesses, we understand that. So, and we have to help, we have to make sure our employees are happy. It's not an easy place to live. So, how do we do that? I don't think we have to do it at where we are at. I think we need to probably start with a zero budget this time, next time around, and really take a hard, hard look at where is the money going, where is it being spent? Where are these projects that we're delaying? How do we get these on board? That's going to cost us some money. If we want workforce housing, we're probably going to have to have a mill that says just for that. We have, lower our taxes, and we give maybe a point-one mill or even smaller than that, and that is dedicated to workforce housing, and it's the only place they can spend it. And that may be the only way we can do it until we make ourselves spend it where we need to, because it's so easy to spread it around.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Don Horton?
Joe, maybe we're a victim of our own success at this point. I mean, we have, since the beginning, built a wonderful city, and I don't think that there's any homeowner in here that would wish that their property values would go down. Of course, that comes with services, and we have built a new firehouse on Plantation Key when we built Founder's Park, and that takes employees. We built a new firehouse down in Lower Matacombe at the request of the citizens of Lower Matacombe, and that takes staffing. Mary's correct. We did. We brought in, we used to have our own subcontract folks that would take care of our rightaways. I firmly believe that we need to outsource some of these services, which is another reason why I believe we need to go to the Key Largo Wastewater Authority to take care of our wastewater. We need to go out to vendors to take care of our equipment. We need to not keep parking twenty trucks on the weekend back here and lessen the staff that we have. That way, utilizing subcontract employees in order to take care of lowering some of our employee costs. Sorry, Rob.
Okay, thank you, Don. Tom?
I have a completely different perspective. Having had to run state operations and then worldwide operations, this village suffers from a serious case of mismanagement. We treat the money like it's monopoly money. People can walk through the door and ask for fifty grand and leave with a check. We have a terrible budgeting system. When I had to prepare a budget, I had to come in with a budget with a ten percent cut, a fifteen percent cut, and then you tell me what you really need. And every time we did that, we found that some of the things that we did, we achieved the goal, and we moved the money, or we gave the money back to the taxpayers. We don't do that here. We need to change the entire way we do budgeting here. For the, from the day you have become the county, from the day you left the county, because of all the bad things that they're doing, now we're doing them. We've got to change the way we do business from top to bottom. It takes leadership and know-how.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I think that concludes question seven, so we're going to move to eight. And I think...
Thank you.
There's only one name left in the bowl, so... So, Van, it is you, Buddy. I'll go ahead and read question eight. Please prioritize. Aside from BPAS issues, what you believe are the top two challenges the village of Isla Marata will face during your term? How do you plan to address these two issues?
Wastewater, workforce, housing. We've bashed that around for years, and we actually need to do something. Wastewater, I agree that, I argued before the first shovel went in the ground for this new central system, that we should have our own wastewater board. We should be at the level of Key Largo wastewater board. We should have that kind of a structure administration for our own four islands. Instead, we're dependent on Key Largo and this huge pipeline from Lower Matacombe to Upper Key Largo, which is always breaking. And if we're going to make it right, we're stuck with it now, so we got to do the best we can with what we got. And I think we should definitely side with Key Largo, and we should insist on somebody from Isla Marata being on their board to represent us in those meetings. I mean, we have, the manager goes up and visits from time to time, but that's not really enough. We need to be represented, period.
Okay, thank you, Van. We're going to skip over backwards to Buddy. Go ahead, Buddy.
Well, I would say the number-one thing here that we need to address is, besides the BPAS, is workforce housing. I'm going to keep harping on it and harping on it and harping on it. You know, I know there's been, you know, you got to get a council that's in agreement, all right? We just, we've tried and tried. Some people don't want to cut hammocks, some for some reason, but we got it, we have to do something to get workforce housing. First of all, and I'm going to jump to wastewater, I think wastewater, I fought them putting four plants here. I don't want more sewage treatment plants, putting more affluent into our water to cause more problems with nearshore, because I know what Big Pine Key looked like. I know what it is today since it's been sewered, and it's a closed system, and the canals are coming back. There's turtle grass and things, the fish are coming back. So, we should have never let lane off the hook when they managed and brought wastewater in the house. So, we either have Key Largo, or the Aqueduct does a lot of the stuff for the county, let somebody that has the manpower, the equipment, and whatnot to work with wastewater. Thank you.
Thanks, Buddy. Tom Raffinello?
Well, if we're not going to talk about BPAS, that means you don't want to talk about ROGOs and takings, because they're all interrelated. And there are some great articles on ROGOs, but that, those issues are the real issues that are going to shape this city. Because we will be spending a lot of money, we will be overdeveloping a lot of places. We don't have the studies necessary to decide. The people need to decide where they want to develop and how much development they want. We don't ask them. We do it in a closed house here. There isn't enough public input. We've taken steps to last council to minimize public input, when the public really runs this place. That's a big issue, and there'll be a lot of money changing hands and a lot of high-powered lawyers trying to do the bidding of people that bought land with unreasonable expectations. The other is the budget process. I can't get away from it, because it's taxpayer money, and we have a responsibility to do it right, and we don't even come close to doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Don Horton?
Well, so I think long-term planning and us stop governing by crisis would be a really wonderful thing for us to start doing. I feel like that on a nightly basis at a council meeting, there are many decisions that are made that are not thought out, and there's been a couple of times where these decisions were brought back and they had to re-vet them. Our comp plan coming up is a very important document. We have got to work as a community to get this comp plan done right. We have got to make sure that we do the correct studies internally and externally with the citizens to make sure we don't make mistakes on our zoning and our future land use maps. Workforce housing is always going to be top of the list. We have been wanting it and wanting it, and I can tell you, as someone who tried to build two workforce housing duplexes, and the pitfalls that I was put through in the village in order to get those done, including over forty thousand dollars in sewer assessment fees for four hundred and seven hundred square-foot units, was ridiculous. We need to work on these things, and we can as a community.
Thank you, Don. Mary Barley?
Yes. You know, we've been talking, we've talked a lot about stormwater, and stormwater is equated with asphalt in non-permeable areas. I can tell you, just every new house that went up on my street, there's hardly a screen space in their property. Those are the kind of things, if we really want to help the environment, nearshore waters, these are right on Florida Bay, these houses. So, if we really care about them, we need to do something. So, I'm going to ask all of you to come to meetings, to call at your new people who are you're going to invite, to come up here and represent you. We're getting a comp plan. Be a part of the solution. Because if you're not, it's going to continue to be just like it has been. There'll be delays, and nothing will ever get done. So, please, you're here, you've made time to come, and come here, make time to be part of the solutions as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Deb Gillis?
Well, as everybody else has said also, the workforce, affordable housing, when I use the word affordable, I use it in interchange, even though there is some definition difference between workforce and affordable. But I use that word because when you talk to the state, that's the word they use, and that's how you get stuff. But it's got to be a priority. We have the land, we just need to put the process together. Mary's right. We have delayed it and delayed it. Every time it comes to the brink of doing something, we go, "Well, no, maybe we need to think about this again." And stormwater, it's going to be the problem in the future, because it affects so much of our waters and what we're doing, and we've got to start thinking and working on it now. Those reports are exactly right. I was told years ago that if you thought sewers was expensive, you haven't even begun to look at stormwater. We have to start looking at where that money would come from, because we don't want it to come from the citizens.
Thank you, Deb. Anna Richards?
I would say our number-one priority, I think, is getting the comp plan done, because everything else is going to fall after that. Once that is complete, we need to push forward and actually get the community here, get everybody, do workshops, whatever we need to do to get that done as quickly and efficiently as possible, because after that, we deal with affordable housing, workforce housing, stormwater, wastewater, once we have a plan in place to move forward.
I believe that is all the responses for question eight. We will move on to question nine.
Oh, no, no, no. It's like fourteen questions. Fourteen.
Another name, and we're going to start this one off with Van. I'll read the question for you. "It is undeniable that tourism is the foundation of the economy in the Florida Keys. What can we expect you to do to support Isla Marata's tourism economy?"
In the past, historically, traditionally, Isla Marata has been a vacation destination for America. And that has changed in the last twenty years from hundred-dollar motel rooms that allowed a middle-class family to come here for four or five days and charter a boat and go fishing in the sport fishing capital of the world. We have hotel conglomerates that have bought up Isla Marata and are posting thousand-dollar-a-night motel rooms rates. And to me, that's not sustainable for our tourist, you're ruining the tourist trade when you do that. You're making it upscale, five-star, elitist enclave resort properties are not what America wants to come down to the Keys to see. We need to restore what's been taken. We have, there are ways to restore the properties, the waters around our islands, and make it so that people that come here from all over America can enjoy this, not just the people with deep pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. We're going to move to Buddy next. Go ahead, Buddy.
Well, as Van said a minute ago, Isla Marata is the fishing capital of the world. Everywhere I go, I've been around the world, I've been many places all over, in Southeast Asia to Brazil, all over in Amazon, and you know what? People love Isla Marata. You go to Tallahassee, people talk about Isla Marata. I was in Jacksonville yesterday, people talk about Isla Marata, how special it is, Chica Lodge, or, you know. So, I'd say we need to support the people, the businesses here, and what can I do for them? We want to do whatever we can for them. If they need help with their parking, we help them with their parking. We got to work on traffic. You know, I don't know, I just feel like that, I can think of Leo Samuels that built the island, or how many families been coming here for year after year? Maybe some of y'all came here and started staying at Chica or the island or Holiday Isle, and now you own houses here. Well, you know, it's Carl and Cynthia Twitchell that started Chica. You know, families are still coming there today.
Thank you, Buddy. Tom Raffinello, we'll move to you next.
Sure. I've been coming here since the mid-to-late eighties, when even the Chica was affordable. And it's not that way anymore. You know, I'm curious as to what the Chamber is doing, but that, I'll save that for another forum. But TDC needs to share the pain more than they share it now. I don't know if they put their money in the bank or how they do it, but people live here as well. There are residents here, and the residents seem to come in third and fourth. I go to, I don't get off the island much. I spend all my money here with local businesses. I want to see them thrive, but there's a balance between the residents and the businesses. And we need to work together a little bit more instead of the us-and-them relationship that we have with some facets of the business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Don Horton?
Thank you, Joe. You know, when I first moved here, my family would say, "Where'd you move to?" And I'd say, "The Keys," and the first thing they'd say is, "Key West." When I tell people now that I'm from the Keys, they say, "Isa Marata." That's, we've built a wonderful city, a beautiful place, and tourists still love coming here. And no, when I first moved here, I couldn't afford Chica, and I probably wouldn't want to have to pay the rents there that are now. But I still, I still think that we need to encourage our business community. We need to stand behind our business community, because the tourism is the lifeblood of this, and it always has been. I think that there certainly is ways that we can work with this. I think I'm very proud of the community when we put together the, our transient use, vacation rental use ordinance, and a hotel yours got together with the citizens in the Chamber, and we worked out an exact number that we needed to have for vacation rental licenses, and that's working. So, I think we need to stand behind our tourist economy. That helps our local businesses, and it helps our citizens as well.
Okay, thank you, Don. Mary Barley?
I think there's no doubt that we stand behind the tourist industry. All you have to do is look around and see what we've allowed to be built and who's coming in. What they need to do, they need to help us. They need to help the residents of the village by allowing the tourist tax, some of that tax to come back to help us out. They can't keep taxing us for their workforce, for their, for the roads, for everything, and take that, all those dollars and go and put them in other states and advertise. Just go to a state, it's almost sickening when you turn on the TV telling everybody to come here to the Keys, but we're not getting anything out of that. We're trying to build workforce housing, we're spending millions of dollars on wastewater. We need to have a change, and they need to help us make that change, and there's no reason why we can't have, we can't work together and be partners in that.
Thank you, Mary. Deb Gillis?
Well, first of all, I think to support our local businesses, our business is tourism, and that tourism is based on the environment. So, we need to make sure that we're putting strict rules in place for the environment. But that doesn't mean that you can't allow the businesses to do redevelopment. That means that you work with them on making sure that the environment that they have on their property is protected. We also, we also have to consider the traffic. The traffic is actually, a lot of it is a pass-through traffic. It's kind of hard to help the traffic. We can, I've got a couple ideas that I'd like to do on traffic by, but when they're headed to Marathon in Key West, there's only one road. They have to pass through us. I'd like to get a study and find out how many comes in Isla Marata and how many goes out the other end. That tells you how many is staying here. TDC is providing... TDC is providing money for infrastructure and for events every year.
Okay, Deb. Anna Richards.
As far as tourism, we all know fishing and diving is our number-one tourist attraction here. I'm friends with a lot of guides. My husband was a guide at one time. We need to support all of these guys as well, have their backs when they're out working. And then the new TDC director put it out there that she's focusing more on people that appreciate coming here and appreciate the destination, versus just trying to hurry up and turn numbers and do heads in beds. So getting the families back here more, and being more appreciative of our area, and protecting our area, not leaving their trash in the waters and on the ground.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anna. I think that brings us to the end of the respondents for nine. So we're going to move on to 10. We're more than halfway there, so. Okay, and I pulled another name, and Deb Gillis, you will start us off on this next one.
Yeah.
Deb, you'll start us off on the next one.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and read it to you. What is your stance, we've talked about, a couple of you have mentioned this already, so here's your opportunity to talk about it a little bit more. What is your stance on outsourcing services in the village? Are there any services you believe should be outsourced or brought in-house? Please explain which services and why you think this would benefit the community.
Well, yeah, we have talked about this already this evening, but I do believe that we need to take a serious look at outsourcing the sewers. I was on council when we brought it in-house, I wasn't overly excited about it, the figures showed that we could save money. But then we started buying fleets of vehicles and all sorts of stuff. So, one, I think the sewers would be a good place to start. Secondly, there's lots of landscaping, larger landscaping businesses that could handle our roads. Part of the reason that we took it, and took it away from DOT, is because they wanted to cut it like once every six weeks, and we wanted it a lot more often than that because of the way our town looks. And I believe that is still true. But if we outsource it, we can tell the company how we want it to look. I'm sure there's other things, we're already outsourcing some of the building department items. Thank you.
Okay, Deb, we'll move on to Mary Barley.
I think that certainly the wastewater, that's would probably be my number one. Number two would be, we have lots of really great landscaping companies right here in our, in the Keys. And we could have a landscaping company for each island or something. We don't have to go out and find some huge company to come down here. We can find local people, and we can give them good jobs, and hopefully bring down our budget.
Thank you, Mary. We'll move on to Don Horton.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, I've already mentioned that a couple of times, and it's, it worked before. We can certainly have people doing our lawn care, or right-of-way mowing, or right-of-way tree trimming. And it's working well in the building department, where we don't have employees, we still have outsourcing on inspection service and our plan review process. It works well, it saves the government money, and it saves on cell phones, and secretaries, and cars, and all of those things that come with, and retirement, and insurance, and all those things that come with employee. So I think that's going to be very important, and we need to look at that, and that is, as I said earlier, a priority of mine. And the wastewater. We should have long time ago joined in with the Key Largo Wastewater Treatment District. They're the professionals in this. We take all of ours to them. I think that we should upgrade ours system to the standard that's acceptable to them, and rewrite a contract, have a seat at their table, and have that outsourced to them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Don. Tom Raffinella.
Wastewater is a no-brainer, but I ask, if we've known that for a decade, why haven't we done it? Number one. Number two, without a top-to-bottom review of services, how would I know? I mean, the easy answer is we'll get rid of the grasscutters. But there are more things to it than that. If you don't do a top-to-bottom review of what services you provide, you can't really say what you can outsource and what you can't. The untethered growth we've gone through with services over the last 25 years, it's going to be tough to unwind that, but it needs to be done if we want to be efficient, and we want to pay the taxpayers the debt and the work that we owe them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Buddy Pender, we'll move to you.
Well, I've thought about this many times, because there are several fellow, you know, men and women that sit on the Florida League Mayor's Board of Directors with me, and some of these cities are totally privatized, every, all of it, from the landscaping, to the wastewater, to planning, to zoning, there's a lot of things. And they don't have to keep up with equipment, they don't have to pay workers' comp, they, you know, if something breaks down, they don't have to, you know, you don't have employees standing around. So I'm all for privatizing. I think the wastewater is the first thing we really need to look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Buddy. We'll move on to Van.
Once again, I'm going to agree with the majority here, and Mr. Pender, that privatizing wastewater and privatizing landscaping makes sense. But what also makes sense is outsourcing our legal to include a village in-house attorney to take care of our, us, the residents of Isla Marada, instead of having a large offshore law firm take care of us. We started out with Wyserota, and then because that was just unsatisfactory, we ended up with Roget. And Roget was with us for 10 years, and I think saved us a lot of money. And, you know, he cost us a lot of money in a lot of other ways, but he was available. He was here, he was on-site. We could ask him a question, and he would get right back to us. I think local legal representation is essential, and we should use that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Anna Richards.
I think we're all in agreement on the wastewater issue, that it's pretty much a no-brainer, as everybody's saying that, you know, we need to make sure our system is up to par, to acceptable to Key Largo standards, and have a seat at their table. And so we have a voice with them as well. And then the rest of it is, we have to break down the budget and compare what we are spending, and maybe put out RFPs for landscaping, but we need to have a legitimate cost on what we're spending versus what it will cost, to see if it's worth us outsourcing it or not. If it's worth it, and it's saving us tax dollars, then we should do it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Anna.
I'm sorry. Can I use another 30 seconds on that same issue, or is it?
Well, I was wondering when everybody's going to start using.
I want to be the first.
You don't want to go home with those in your pocket. So go ahead, Tom.
You know, Van reminded me, this year, we will pay $1 million for legal advice from our contract counselor. We could, the superior, the U.S. Supreme Court pays their chief justice $250,000. We could get a fleet of lawyers for what we're paying Wyserota. We need to bring somebody on the inside. There's a lot of lawyers in this world that'll work for less than $250,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. We're on a roll here. Let's go. All right, Don.
I tell you, there's things that are being said that just are not accurate. And we're not paying Wyserota over $1 million. We're paying a bunch of attorneys a lot of money because of all of the lawsuits that we currently have in this village. And it's not just the firm of Wyserota. As a matter of fact, we are not going to find another law firm that has the expertise that Wyserota has with all of the different attorneys that they have for 250 bucks an hour. So if we can figure out how not to have these lawsuits coming among us all of the time, we're not going to have to outsource to other attorneys so that we defend these lawsuits. But we are not paying Wyserota over $1 million. I want that clear.
Okay. Well, you only get one 30 second.
That's what the invoice says.
Let's make, let's make it three times, three times for a charm.
Right. I think that you both have viable points. I think it's points of the same conversation. Do you want to use yours?
Yes, sir, I would, to answer that question. The legal support that we've had from Wyserota has been to defend whoever sits on the bias, on the dais, excuse me, the bias on the dais. But, and what we need is someone to defend the residents and the law. Now, the law can be twisted any number of ways, and we've watched it happen over the 25 years we've been here, with certain amounts of deflection, and I've spent my little time. But, you know, be advised, we're not getting our dollars' worth from Wyserota. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Does anybody else want to use their little golden ticket? Save it for later? No, you can save it.
I'll just save it.
All right, so we're going to move on to, we're going to move on to question 11. Yeah, no, we're not, we're not horse trading here. So we're going to do question 11. This was one of the questions that was provided to you in advance, and so you've had a lot of time to think about it, reflect on it, and get it in this evening. I will touch on the question again, and we'll give you some time to talk about it. And I'll pick a name here and see who's going to start us off. And that will be Tom Raffinella.
Well, thank you. BPAS is related to.
So, so very simply stated, very simply stated, the question to you all in advance was, in considering dimensions of the BPAS issue, what concerns you the most? So I mean, earlier, you had mentioned that, oh, you know, because one of the questions said aside from BPAS, this is the BPAS opportunity right here. So, so you mentioned in your response, a little bit about insiders, developers, exploitation. Do you want to touch on that, and maybe go further than that in your minute?
I'll start right there. Absolutely. It's been abused. We've got a system that you could drive a bulldozer through. We need to have something, we need to have a plan that the residents are into, that we can implement. People have been taking advantage of what we're doing here with the BPAS. How many, we have to ask people, how many places do we really need? What are, before you can assess how many, you have to assess need. That goes for anything. That's what I said about the Cemex plant. Did we need a third Publix within a mile of the other two? It's need that necessitates what you do. And I don't see the need at this point, without valid traffic studies, without some kind of evac study, we're missing a lot of the key factors that you need to determine this. And until that's done, we shouldn't be asking for anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We'll move to Don next. And Don, you, it looks like you were, you were touching on the enormous tax burden. I'm assuming that has to do with takings, or do you want to go ahead and give us a little color on that?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Joe, thank you. So what concerns me the most is the enormous tax burden, and the tune of millions of dollars that will be placed on the backs of the taxpayers of Isla Marada. Unless we come up with an acceptable plan to bank the 200 allocations that are being offered to us by the state. It's about fairness, it's about property rights. People who followed the rules, applied for their permits, and gotten into the BPAS queue are being cheated. They should be able to get a permit when their time comes. We should change our method of allocation. We should slow our growth after we get these 200 by issuing less permits a year. We should award allocations that include more resilient and more efficient homes. We need to change our TDR ordinance so that we can free up some of those homes and move them around. And we should seek state funding opportunities for land acquisition to stop development on the most sensitive lands. But we also need to understand, and my opponent does it, because it wasn't here, but June 10th of 1992, we started issuing 28 permits per quarter for Isla Marada. We stuck to that, so there has not been untethered growth, there's been agreed-upon growth in Isla Marada since 1992. Now, does that mean that we're built out? It means that we've run out of permits, and we need to pay very close attention on how we're going to further develop. And we need to be smart. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Mary, we're going to move on. We're going to, yeah, the one thing that we want to mention is.
I think I talk loud enough.
Either, well, either bring, well, remember, we're recording it, and they're listening to it outside of here, so.
Sorry.
Get a little closer, and make sure they're on when you're talking, so. Yeah. Mary Barley, we're going to move on to you.
Well.
Sorry.
Good job.
I heard what he said. I did. I think there is a lot of false rhetoric around BPAs. For one thing, if you bought a lot knowing where Isla Marada is, and you may not get a permit, I don't believe that you can go to court and we'll have to pay you some ridiculous amount of money. I just don't believe that that will happen. I've been in lots of cases in Orlando with DOT and others. It's one thing when you rezone something, and then they come and try and take your land. And it's not even a taking, you have to pay for it, right? We like to use the word taking, but that's not, that's not really what's happening. So that's one thing. But we don't even know how much we're going to get, or if we're going to get any of this stuff from, I don't believe it's a final yet.
It's not.
So we don't know if the state's going to allocate one, or 1,000, or 10. So we're talking about something that we don't have any basis to think about, where can we go? And then we, how much can we afford to accommodate? And do we have the infrastructure for 10, 100, 200, 300? That is the most important thing, because who's going to pay to accommodate and for the infrastructure? You. Remember, it's going to be you paying.
Okay, Mary, thank you very much. We're going to move to Deb. And Deb, you pointed out a couple of things in here, property rights, cost to taxpayers, lawsuits. You want to dive into that a little bit for us here?
Sure, sure. The BPAS is just a very, very complicated system, complicated issue, not really a system as much as, and the property right owners, they do have property rights, but without any allocations, they're kind of stuck in a bad place. I think my biggest concern will be the cost to the taxpayers, but we do have some possible solutions, and those can include creating a new point system for eligible lots that could include environment and things along those lines, using the administrative relief or the affordable housing allocations as a secondary way of them being able to utilize their ground, being creative with incentives to combine lots, so that there's not as many needs out there. The transfer of development rights are important, too, because this will allow us to use things that are already counted in our system to put on the lots that need a buildable right. All of these options will help protect the property rights, and yet help save taxpayers' money, hopefully.
Thank you, Deb. Moving right along, Anna. Oh, I'm sorry.
The person who's not here.
Steve would be next in the rotation, I apologize. And as I stated earlier, we did give these out in advance, and Steve did take the time to go through this and give us a response, and I'd like to go forward and read that to you all now. "The current building permit allocation system BPAS that regulates all new residential development has been essentially exhausted by the Village of Isla Marada. Additionally, it's been almost a quarter of a century since the Village updated its comprehensive plan, which is intended to serve as a guidepost for council decisions on all future residential and commercial development. Fortunately, after multiple drama-filled council sessions, the Village has retained a professional consulting firm to help update the comprehensive plan. This is a critical first step. I'm a big believer in planning your work than working your plan. My goal is to make our comprehensive planning process a community conversation. The Village Council should encourage more engagement from our local residents in our planning process. We must be accessible, transparent, and welcoming of more input and expertise from our residents. Finally, my belief is all future residential and commercial development must be fair and equitable, respectful of property rights, responsive to strains on our infrastructure, fiscally responsible, compliant with state and federal statutes that protect our..." fiscally responsible, compliant with state and federal statutes that protect our fisheries, migratory and nesting birds, et cetera, and most importantly, extremely sensitive to our environment and water quality. Our entire economy is intertwined with the health of our region's water, so we must plan accordingly. Once again, that was Steve Friedman's response to question 11, and we will move on to Anna. Anna, you were talking about, obviously, the, the comp plan is a reoccurring theme. You want to talk a little bit more about that, and also, the, made a mention about the planning department, if you want to move forward with those?
Yeah, so basically, it, it's all going to come down to the comp plan and working with the planning department and getting creative on how we're going to be responsible on our growth issues, maybe working on incentives for people, as Deb mentioned, about, you know, joining lots, people getting incentives on that, working on the TDRs, maybe we loosen up the restrictions on those a little bit so we can move those around, and most importantly, just respecting people's rights. You know, these people have already went through the process, they've paid the money, they've submitted these plans long ago, they should have the right to do what they've set forth to do and paid for.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Van? Let's see what you had to say, just to make sure you're not fooling me here. In talking about this, you, you were talking about recognition without build-out. You want to, I know you spoke a little bit about that earlier, you want to, now's your chance, another bite at the apple.
Monroe County, before the village was incorporated, had what they called a carrying capacity study, and it cost millions of dollars, it caused years to do. We waited for it and waited for it, and we finally got it. And the bottom line was that we were very close to being overbuilt at the time. So, being as the, that didn't fit into the construction industry's idea of a good plan, they put it up on the shelf to gather dust where it's been for all these many years, which is one of the reasons that we have these problems. Now, BPAS, we had a BPAS workshop here in the village, and, and we had a lawyer specialized in, in appeals of takings cases. And she said that 99% of the appeals of taking cases never made it to the court, because for the most part, it's a very convoluted process and expensive process, and if we don't get, we can have administrative relief, presentations of permits to people in lieu of a market rate permit. We will give them something of value that they can use, and I'm going to have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Buddy, we'll go to you. And I have yours here. You were talking about limiting residential allocations, a whole host of other things. You want to talk a little bit more about what your concerns are?
Sure. I, I think, number one, we should have cut the system off a long time ago, if, if, you know, or slowed growth, do green growth, smart growth, whatever you want to call it, because I think that the people that have followed our system, we accepted their application, they paid the fee, and then they've been in the system four or five years, and now we, we put a moratorium on administrative relief. All right? It's, you know, I, I, that's not fair to the people. They followed our system. Our system was open, we kept taking the permits, so, you know what? I, I don't think the taxpayers want to actually, if they do have a takings, if we don't give them their permit, then they can sue us. They followed the system, you know, and today, now, not denying people their rights of administrative relief. I waited seven years to get a permit in Isla Marada when it first came into existence. All right? So, I know what it is. I had to file administrative relief. So, we, we got to follow the plan, and if it's our, if our, okay, sorry.
Okay, very good. I think we covered that pretty well. Yeah, we still, don't forget, we still have vouchers, but at this point, I think we are going to, in the interest of time, because we're getting, we're getting tight, we're hoping to be done by 7:30, we're going to go back to speed dating, all right? So, this means we get, we're going to go to 30 seconds, try to be concise, try to be to the point in your answer, you know, get your, get your, your point across. We're going to go to question 12. We're going to pick. All right, we're going to start off with Buddy Pender. In question 12, it's kind of a two-parter, but we'll, we'll kind of run through it. Public comment is an essential aspect of responsive village government. How do you feel it should be managed to ensure it remains respectful, orderly, efficient, and fact-based?
Do you need to go to part two? We're going to do part one first?
Well, I'll give you part two if you want. Building on that, how do you envision yourself working collaboratively with your fellow council members to ensure that decisions are made in the best interest of the community while fostering a respectful and productive meeting environment?
And we only have 30 seconds?
30 seconds. Get to the point.
Okay, so, number one, public comment. I think public comment is essential, and, you know, I, I've been to lots of meetings. We allow three minutes. I don't think that we should, we, we let the people have three minutes, they get to speak, they can speak on each tab. I, I, I don't think, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Some people want to talk more and more and talk about the same thing, you know, we, we got to keep it limited. All right? I can't make two. Thank you.
Well, this one's easy. We're going to move right down the line. We're going to go to Van.
Public comment is dear, dear to my heart, and there's a picture up on the wall of Norman Rockwell, that is, that's the essence of a democracy, is having people having input. And Mr. Pender's right, three minutes is what we get, and I don't mind that, but what I do mind is somebody that's sitting up on, in the mayor's chair, that allows someone that is espousing a position he favors to go over that limit, I'd infine it. I've seen that too many times, and I don't appreciate it, and I don't, I hope we never do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna.
Public comment should be allowed. It should be to a minimum. We can't sit here all night. And part two is being a professional and being courtesy, you know, courtesy, courtesy to the other members that are sitting up here, just professionalism in general. You shouldn't yelling at each other and screaming at each other and getting up and walking out of meetings is middle-school childish behavior, and it should not be happening.
Thank you, Anna. Deb Gillis.
Public comment is essential, and we do need to hear it. People need to be respectful of public comment because we can't sit all night, and, and people should not repeat everything over and over. You can get up and say, yeah, I agree with that. Building on the consensus of your fellow council people, you need to be respectful of their ideas, and at the end of the day, when a vote is taken, you need to agree that if, even if it wasn't your idea, that you will support the idea. That's how we get along.
Thank you, Deb. Mary Barley.
I mean, there's no doubt that public comment is essential. You can't have a-
Oh, sorry.
Make sure you're talking.
Yeah, public comment is essential. If you want a democracy, you have to have the public commenting, and that's just how it works. Building on that, I've watched a lot of the meetings. I think we need to have a time spent, maybe the council members can't spend 10, 20 minutes on everything, going on and on and on, and then they stop, and then they go back. Maybe they need to have a time limit, and we should think about that.
Thank you, Mary. Dawn.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, agreement with everyone, the public comment is essential, it's a must. I, I think that I would certainly encourage, when I'm up here, for people to call me and for people to email me and voice their opinions that way. I think that if there are public comments that are exactly the same each time, perhaps just saying that you agree with that other person in a, to save time. And also, I think that it's only fair to the public that the conversation that takes place up on this dais be as short as you do your homework, you come here and you can talk about it.
My mic's, oh, my mic wasn't on. I turned Mary's on, I didn't turn mine. But I think that that's essential as well, is, is that the, the homework needs to be done, and the decisions need to be made swiftly here, too.
Thank you, Dawn. Tom Raffinello.
You can't have a government without public comment, number one. Number two, filling out pieces of paper about what you're going to comment on before somebody speaks is absurd. I think you should be able to go up there and speak to whatever you feel like speaking, but you need to be respectful, and if you step over the bounds, you should be sent to your room. As far as, okay, as far as the second part of the environment, in the U.S. Congress, there are red and green lights in front of each congressman, and they get limited amounts of time to speak. I've listened to more soliloquies from people at these desks than I have watching congressional hearings. Everybody needs discipline. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We're on to our next question. I think we've gone through everybody there. I'm sorry.
Are we there yet?
So, we're on to our next question. We've got just a couple more left, and we're going to start it off with Anna Richards.
You've got to go pink, don't you?
It's 15. And I'm going to go ahead and read it for you. Village councils sometimes face a decision to either uphold or revisit actions taken by previous councils. Do you believe it is important to maintain continuity by upholding prior decisions, or are there circumstances where revisiting settled matters is appropriate? Please give us a short explanation.
Definitely, sometimes we need to revisit, because honestly, some of those decisions are just stupid. I, I mean, I mean, that's pretty much all I can say about that. It needs to be fixed.
Thank you, Anna. Deb Gillis.
I do think that sometimes they need to be reviewed, but they need to be respectfully reviewed and not say that the other council that I, because I sat on previous councils, I believe we did what we thought was right and what was pertinent at the time, and maybe you've got more facts and information now, but that's the way it should be presented, not that they didn't do their jobs. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Barley.
And I, I agree with Deb's said, but, you know, we have a lot more technology now, so we know a lot more, and we can look at previous decisions that may have been made without all the information that's available to us. So, you shouldn't shove anything aside. We should be able to move and grow in, in a smart way, and that's what I would do.
Okay, thank you. Dawn Horton.
Yes, I believe we should be able to revisit previous decisions. I think that it doesn't matter if it was a decision made a year ago or a, a meeting ago. We just recently had that happen, and I think it was because of the, the, the public getting involved and asking council to reconsider their decision, and I think that that's important to have an open mind and to be able to see if you've made a mistake, that you can come back and fix that mistake. Absolutely.
Thank you, Dawn. Tom.
No executive can be successful if he isn't willing to revisit things that, under a new light. New lights can change decisions, and I think you've got a responsibility to do that.
Thank you, Tom. Buddy.
Doubtably, I think that you, we should revisit things. A lot of council that were here previously sometimes have changed things. We get blamed for it with the current council, and sometimes you have to change and make it right. There's, there's no question about it.
Okay, thank you, Buddy. Van.
Well, I agree with the general consensus about revisiting things that are questionable, but a lot of times that decisions are made that are in error because the people didn't do their homework. They are not cognizant of what was in the agenda. So, I would also like to know why we're going from question 12 to question 15, because 13 is my lucky number, and you were coming up on my lucky number, and now we're going to 15.
Well, we're running tight on time, so we're trying to, we're trying to keep away from doing too many repeats.
Okay, I have to-
Some of these topics overlap a little bit, and a lot of times, you guys have given a lot of color in your answers, so I just didn't want to get into-
We've got a lot more color to go.
Oh, I know we do, but we wish we had more time. Okay, so where does that leave us? That leaves us through the last question, so we're going to move on. We've got, we've got two more to go through, and I'm going to pick a name.
It's who starts.
Right.
When's that we start?
And we're going to start off with Dawn Horton. And the question is, 25 years ago, the village created Founder's Park, widely regarded as the jewel of our community. The village is currently undergoing a Founder's Park master plan review with a focus on community involvement and gathering input to shape its future. As the consultant team works to prioritize the park's functionality, what is your vision for the future of Founder's Park?
Thank you, Joe. You know, there were a lot of people that were against Founder's Park when it was originally purchased, and they really felt that we had made a huge mistake at the beginning of incorporation of the village. This has turned out to be the jewel. We have so many different functions here, we have so many opportunities here. I, I just hope that the community that's involved pays attention to the master plan. I think that our community, to give the right feedback this time and have this park fit exactly what we want for the future, we've got to constantly think about the future. We need to listen to our younger folks that are in this room, that are moving back in, and the 30-somethings and the 20-somethings that are starting their careers, and have them, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dawn. Tom.
The key is to listen to your residents, listen to the people, see what they want. I have two teenagers. I'm at the park here more than I am in my own room, so I kind of enjoy it. My son swims, I coached a, a soccer team here. I think it's a great location, but anything can be improved.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Buddy, we'll move to you.
Yes, my vision is to continue for the generations to come for the park. I think it's a great place. I come here and walk at night, sometimes later at night. It's a very safe place. I, I can't tell you how many people comment on this park, and I want to say thank you to the park committee for what they do, but we really would like the residents to give us, you know, their opinion, and some of the younger people, the younger generations, I mean, people, they want more pickleball courts, or they want this, or whatever, so anyways, yeah, I just think it is the crown jewel, and can I use my 30 seconds right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so I want to say one thing real quick about Live Wiley. Mr. Arnie Bellini, who's the man that started Live Wiley, he spent tens of millions of dollars with the Wildlife Corridor. The man came here, he told me a story about coming here, spent two weeks here, riding around on his bike, talked about how the green space, the parks, everything that we had, what was going on here, and he said, you know what? He said, why can't we do this in the whole state of Florida? That's, this is where the, the Live Wiley and the Wildlife Corridor, he went back and he said, we can do this in the whole state of Florida. I just found that out a week, two weeks ago.
Thank you, Buddy. Van.
This is definitely the jewel of Isla Marada, and it's a central to the social aspect of Isla Marada. All the teams for all the kids, and the pool, and all the benefits and amenities that we offer here are a shining example of what Isla Marada was meant to do, was to bring people together. It's very expensive. The pool is fixing to cost us another couple million dollars. I don't think it's ever been emptied in 25 years. So, it's, we got to take it down to nothing, and we got to essentially rebuild the pool, but it's going to be worth it. It's going to be worth it, and I, following other people, please, please come to these sessions to plan the master plan for this place. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Anna.
Well, as the current president of the Upper Keys Rotary, I was part of one of the focus groups that came here to meet with the people that are doing the master plan, and there was several of us here that day, and the majority of us all voted or agreed upon that mainly we just want it left as green space. We had a couple of ideas to clean up a couple of areas, but for the most part, everybody enjoys this place as it is.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Deb Gillis.
Well, by far, I think Dawn said it is, it wasn't well-received when they first bought it, but it has become the jewel of the Keys. And the envision, I envision it to be all-inclusive for everybody, and I think, I think we're close. It's the maintenance and maintaining it, going down the road to keep it that jewel that, like, like Van was talking of, we're, we're going to have to redo the, the pool, the tennis courts, eventually the pickleball courts, because they're the newest of everything. If you don't maintain it, you lose it, so it's important to maintain it.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Mary Barley.
I have to agree with Anna. Parks are green spaces, and we should try and keep it as green as possible. And you'll see, you can see that there's lawn and the maintenance vehicles, and all of a sudden, every time you come, there's more and more vehicles parking here and there. It's getting overtaken by automobile, not, well, working vehicles. That's not what we want to park for. And asphalt. You have to be careful what you bring into it. There's a lot of things that are just, just for the, oh, sorry, have to get it another time. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mary. All right, that brings us to the last question of the evening. And we've touched on so many things this evening, and of course, it's true that there's many challenges before us, and we've talked about some of those tonight. But at the end of the, at the end of it all, we're very fortunate to live in such an amazing place, and I think several of you have mentioned that throughout the evening. So when you're out of town, and you're seeing different people, and you're stuck in the elevator talking to somebody, what is it that you would tell somebody that makes you most proud about Isla Marata? And Mary Barley, we're going to start with you.
It's where we're located that makes me the most proud. We're on the most beautiful islands, Atlantic on one side, Florida Bay on the other, clean water, fishing, diving, boating, swimming, clean air. We have things that most people don't have, blue skies, clouds that are like our mountains. It's the most beautiful place, and I love it. I'm going to die here.
Thank you, Mary. Deb Gillis.
Well, I'm not sure that Mary didn't nail it, I'm going to die here also. I have no intentions of leaving. This is, this has got to be one of the beautiful places of the world, and we have maintained, even as much as we complain, we have maintained that beauty. There's room for improvement, of course, but it is, people come here for the water, for the, even just the land. I run a motel, and I have all these people that return year after year. I have guests that's been coming for 30 years.
Thank you, Deb. Anna?
I would say that we live in a very special place. There's not many places that you can go jump in your boat after work and go for a little sunset ride, or if traffic's bad, hey, let's go to, let's go to lunch by boat. We live in a safe place. Our children are our focus, and, you know, there's not much else you can say about this community. And I told my kids when they were little, everybody in this town knows you. You don't know them, but they know you. I promise you.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Van.
What makes me the most proud of Isla Marata, I'm looking at right now, it's the people of Isla Marata. I've lived here my whole life in the Upper Keys, and every time there's a catastrophe of any kind, the people pull together. And they have character. A lot of them are characters, and I appreciate that. But the people here are just the tops, as far as I'm concerned. That's the main reason that I enjoy living here and always have, and hopefully always will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Buddy Pender.
Alls I can say, I would take nothing for growing up here, it's a great place. I think for the generations to come, it's going to be a great place. And, you know, I asked some of the billionaires the same question, they said, where can I go and have the freedom and then the beauty? So, you know, I just think of what Mr. Bellini just said, and the state parks here, Lindemviety, Indian Key, Windly Key, I mean, just all the things that we have before us right here in our community.
Thank you, Buddy. Tom Raffinello.
I've lived in probably every big city in the country, but what makes this special for me is that I'm raising my children here, my wife is here, this is my home. They love it here. It's virtually crime-free. I agree with everything that Mary said, but there's no place like home when I just, I go to other places, and I used to go more frequently than I do now. This is where I want to be, this is where they are, the schools are great here. It is a special place, and I appreciate every minute I'm here.
Thank you, Tom. Dawn Horton.
Well, I think about crossing Jewfish Creek Bridge in 1977 and looking at the water here and just falling in love, going right straight back to Texas and quitting my job, fighting wildfires, and packing up my kids and my wife, and now I've got the great-grandkids, the grandson, that all live here on Plantation Key. The water is gorgeous, the people are wonderful, we're a diverse community. We can argue in one minute, and we can turn right back around and give each other a hug, and that's what it's all about. And I think that's what makes this place so special. We are people from Isla Marata, and we aren't different than people from the other areas of the Keys.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dawn. Well, we went over a few minutes, but I think it was very important, I think it was good conversation, I think very informative. And I want to close with a couple of things before we all disperse. In closing tonight, I want to first and foremost make sure that we thank all of our candidates, their willingness to put themselves out there for the betterment of the community, if we could all give them a hand. I also want to thank our audience this evening. I hope that we've given you some information that you can take home and make an informed decision going forward. Also, without the hard work and organization provided by Judy Hall, this just simply wouldn't be possible. And to my colleagues on the chamber board, many of those who participated tonight to make this go smoothly, and may be in the room this evening, if you could just stand, please. I want to thank, I want to thank you all for your time and service, those of you that served on the committee, putting this together. We put a lot of time and effort into this, and thank you so much. As we leave tonight, think about the special place we call home and how we may make it better. Make your voice heard by voting on November 5th, and have a good evening.